Good evening, everyone. Welcome. We have a large crowd tonight. I'd like to welcome y'all to the January 7th, 2025 Regular Schedule Commissioners Meeting. I've asked Commissioner Perkins to lead us in the prayer, and Commissioner White's gonna lead us in the pledge, so if you would all stand, please.
Let's pray. Our Father God in heaven, we come, dear God, humble for your presence, we know how. Lord, we come, thank you for God, how you blessed us, and we slumming slept all last night. Woke up to a brand-new day, dear God. We thank you, Father, for taking care of us through dangerous, seen and unseen dangers. Allowed us to come here tonight, oh God. We pray, God, for all that's here right now, God. Look upon this board in a mighty way. Give us the wisdom and all the understanding, God, to be able to handle the situation coming for this board. Ask God, look upon all that's here, dear God, you blessed one that's here. We thank you, God, for allowing us to be in this great nation. Thank you, God, for the land of the free, home of the braves. We thank you, God, you bless our, all of our leading officials, dear God, look on this. Dear God, you blessed them in a mighty way, God. And we pray, God, you bless those in the White House, God, and those in the local and state officials, God, that you bless in the name of Jesus. And God, we serve you with praise and glory. And God, we thank you, your son, Jesus Christ, who hung, bred, and died, who meant life, life more abundantly. Thank you, Christ, we pray. Amen.
(Inaudible)
The first item on the agenda for tonight is item number one, the approval of the minutes. We have the November 19th, 2024 Audit Committee meeting, the December 17th, 2024 bid tabulation for the RFQ 2025-01, and the December 17th, 2024 Regular Schedule Board meeting. Any questions, comments, concerns in regards to any of those minutes?
(Inaudible).
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Perkins.
Second.
Have a second by Commissioner White. All in favor, aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. The next item on the agenda is the public concerns and comments. I do have three cards here, so we'll go through these three first, and if there's anyone that didn't get to fill a card out or would like to speak, come up after these three. First one I have here is Ms. Wendy S. Martin, 15850 141st Road, McCalpin. Welcome, Mrs. Martin. Yes, ma'am.
(Inaudible).
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you.
Greetings. My name is Wendy Martin. I live at 15850 141st Road in McCalpin. Up here about the theft of that particular design on a banner. Fred and I have used this particular property on Palmit, adjacent to the fire department. Fred and I have used this property for like 15, since 2015, for purposes of putting out our political point of view, shaming people about voting, his running for office. After his death, his sign stayed up. The first banner about him running, I kept up till after the election. I don't know who removed it, but I figured souvenir and a misunderstanding about removal of election signs after the election. They didn't damage anything. So I replaced it with the banner that photographed that you have in front of you. That particular one, the first two mountings, I used the mounting from the original banner that Fred had put up, which had survived all the storms that came through. The second I put up was put up with same type of PVC pipe and mounting Fred had used when he did the initial mount that I used the first time for that banner. The third one, because of the thefts, when they're doing it, they're not completely removing the screws. They've been ripping them out of the tree and tossed them. I have some of them in my truck, and I've photographed everywhere I've found anything. But there've been three thefts, the last two. The third theft I had put up because I figured the pipe I'm using is what you would use to repair under a sink, so I went with wood and deck screws. And by the evidence that's left, they had an easier time getting that off than they did getting the pipes and the bolts I was using. I'm gonna reorder that banner, but I'm putting it up at my house. A friend of mine pointed out that it might be because of the little man caricature on there, because when Fred ran for sheriff in 2016, we had about 200 of the staff signs with that design on it that just kinda walked away, half of them before the election happened. So we did the advertising about, you're not allowed to remove it during the election, but after the election, you help them clean up. But on this particular banner, I don't know if they're doing it to steal the plumbing, to steal the banner. I have filed police reports on it with Swanee County Sheriff's Department. The last two thefts based upon tire tracks I found and photographed, same vehicle, but it's, whatever it is, it's a large truck. It's got big tires and kinda with the cleated. I'm gonna put another banner up, 'cause I'm stubborn. I'm gonna get rid of the little man and leave the marijuana leaf and the statement about the body cameras and see what kind of fate I do on that. The location of the property and where the signs are, or the banner I've been trying to put up, game cameras and such would be difficult because I wouldn't be able to get either a face or a tag, because I'd have to have it too far away. If I put it above the sign, all I'm gonna get is the top of somebody's head. But, so if you see that around, let Deputy Creach know, she's the one who's been investigating it all, the Swanee County Sheriff's Department. But whoever's doing this is a coward, because they weren't doing this while Fred was alive. They waited till after his death to start messing with me, and I don't know if it's out of disrespect, out of their doing a scavenger hunt and gathering the little man, or they don't like women being involved in politics. I don't give a damn. They're interfering with my political speech, they're trespassing on the property to do it. I've checked with the various governmental agencies and private entities that, okay, they're on the list of possibility, maybe, and they've all told me, no, it's not them, and they'd send me a letter before they do anything. But I really don't know what else to do other than come here and, you know, kinda put out the human cry for it.
Well, we appreciate you letting us know.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next form I have here is Mr. Curtis McCollum, 12623 State Road, 51, live vote. Welcome, Mr. McCollum.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I'm here to request a moratorium on the Swanee County Zoning Board of Adjustments actions until such time as the land development regulations can be updated and accessed online by the property owners of Swanee County. Swanee County's land development regulations, known as the LDRs, were adopted September 3rd, 1992, and last updated of record, May 20th, 2014. We're trying to defend our community against a ruling made by the Board of Adjustment, but we don't know what the LDR contains since it has not been updated in 10 and 1/2 years. In a visit with Director Meeks, he told me I could go through 10 and 1/2 years of county commission meetings, but his words, it would just be busy work. That means that the members of the Board of Adjustment do not have access to a current LDR. The board members are making decisions that affect the property rights, the homes and the families of Swanee County. The Board of Adjustment cannot make fair and just decisions if they don't know the current LDRs. The property owners cannot defend against what they don't know. Please declare a moratorium and suspend any future actions by the Board of Adjustment until such time as the LDR is updated and can be reviewed online. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCollum. Mr. Morrison, or you or Mr. Meeks want to speak to that?
Well, I can speak to the legalities. This board doesn't have the authority, right here, right now, to suspend or obey the board of, that board, because that was created via ordinance. So the only way that there could be any action taken against it, which would limit its power to do or not do anything, would be via ordinance. So as to the legalities of what he said, just not speaking to the propriety of what is or is not online, but no, we can't do that.
Not, not tonight?
Right, and we would have to pass an ordinance to suspend it, which frankly, I mean, they'll be posted on, if they're not posted online, I'm sure Mr. Meeks can speak to that, would be done way faster than any of the work that would do going into an ordinance.
But, to be clear, to do what his ask was tonight could not be done because of the public notice requirements.
Correct. It would take, it would take an ordinance to modify an ordinance, so there's all kinds of public notice requirements and publishing requirements that go with creating an ordinance, and so because that hasn't been complied with going into today, and we need at least, I forget how many days' notice, off the top of my head, I wanna say it's at least 14 days for publishing, we, the board doesn't have the authority to do it today.
Okay.
So each time that the Board of County Commissioners-
Picture Mike there.
-Board of County Commissioners amend the text of the land development regulations, it does so by adopting an ordinance. The county doesn't recreate a new book every time that happens. Now, we do work in the process of doing that periodically, currently working with Regional Planning Council in creating a complete document. However, when someone applies for an application that is part of something that has been amended, for an example, the most recent amendment to the LDRs had to do with the RV parks and campgrounds, and we've done all that text amendment. If someone were to apply for an RV park or campground, they are provided that ordinance that the board adopted. So their current regulations are passed along to the people who would be applying for or defending against that particular application. The application in question is a special exception in regards to automotive repair and repair of agricultural equipment, and very simple, you can search the records, and there have been no amendments to the text of the land development regulations in dealing with automotive repair and repair of agricultural equipment. So, in theory, the LDRs that anyone has access to for this specific application are current. If it dealt with an application that the board has amended the text, then those people would be provided those copies of the pertinent amendment. Having the amendment is an updated copy of the LDRs. We don't create a new book every time this board takes action.
So in theory, you have, just for transparency, I guess, for public, you know, explanation, you got a set of LDRs there. Anytime those are amended, and you and I've talked about this, that amendment is, applies to whatever article, section, whatever, RV campgrounds we talked about. At the time, let's just hypothetically say, an RV campground application is submitted, in this case, it does not, because RV campgrounds come to this board, but if it was to go to the plan and zoning board, they would be given a copy of the LDRs and the amendments to that, so they would have that information in front of them.
So you know what current regulations that you have to adhere to?
Mr. Chairman, if I may?
Yes.
Just also add one other, this just occurred to me. But since the LDRs, the current ones, the primary book is online, correct, Mr. Meeks?
There's a way to access it through online, yes.
Correct. And then there's also the public service called MuniCode, which is what we use, and it's publicly available, it's also free, which is fully searchable by a normal search language. You don't have to, you know, remember those Boolean search terms to do it. And that will have all of our ordinances, everything we've passed, so should a member of the public wish to double-check the current version of what's in the primary book versus whether or not there's been an amendment, we do have a publicly accessible and searchable website, which is designed to be user-friendly, which will have all of the, depending on the search terms used, listed amendments by ordinance, and that'll all be there fully online, and it's there right now.
Which was reflective of my comments to Mr. McCollum, is that you can search through those records through the last 10 years, but there have been no changes in regards to what was applied for, nor the appeal or defense behind that. So the records that are, exist for LDR amendments regarding RV parks and campgrounds, or rural activity centers, or the location of certain streets that this board has considered under the amendments in the past 10 years, play no part into the special exception request. So, but that information is searchable through an online search through MuniCode, as Mr. Morrison pointed out.
Okay. Thank y'all for that explanation. Mr. McCollum, if you'd like to stick around, I don't wanna get into a debate here tonight, 'cause we got other business to handle, but if you'd like to stick around after the meeting, we will-
Can I use the rest of my three minutes, about a minute and a half?
Sure.
Okay. In the first meeting, Attorney Decker referred us to the online records, which are through 2014, and said, if we need to defend our property, we need to go to these LDRs. We went online and there. I've polled the surrounding counties, Lafayette, Hamilton, Columbia, Madison, Lafayette, for instance, go to their website, they're up to date. The statute, and I'm not trying to practice law, but I, and you can back me up on this if you would like, but I believe Chapter 163 says that the county must update these every seven years. What Mr. Meeks said is that they have access to that. A sign was stuck in the front yard, which wasn't even, most of it was laying down. We had 10 days to prepare for this. We go to the LDRs, they're online. That's all the homeowners can do. Mr. Meeks may be able to do other things, but the homeowners, to protect themselves, right of luck. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mr. McCollum, if you wanna stick around afterwards, we can all have a discussion privately.
Okay.
You and I've spoke a lot on the phone, but we can, we'll have everybody in the room. Where was I at? Mr. Wayne Hanica, public comment. Name and address for the record, too, please, sir.
Wayne Hanica, 1183 93rd Road, Live Oak. As part of concerned citizens of North Florida, my goal has always been to educate the public of what's going on, and our website does that, but we show every meeting that's here, we capture minutes, we try to make sure that everybody has access to find things. But tonight, I'd like to speak a little bit about economic development. If you would bear with me to give you a little bit of what, for the public, what do they really do? They actually do two separate things. One is tourism, and the second is economic development. And tourism, they basically share stories, photos, videos, all on, online, Google, Facebook, Instagram, YouTube. They run paid advertisements on Google, they run paid ads on Facebook, they do search engine marketing, so when you type in Swanee County, best place to swim, it'll take you to that. This effort is solely funded by the bed tax. Not one dime of your and my money pays for that effort. So that's tourism. The second part that economic development does is promote the goals and recruit companies for good jobs for our, for our youth, and to bring them into the county. This helps build our tax base, 'cause we all know, we can get all the houses we want, but if we don't get some businesses, that's really where your tax base comes from. Economic Development partners with River Oak Technical College and other sources, such as Career Source, to be sure, once they get a business here, they, we've got the workforce that will suit that business. Six target industries are focused: manufacturing, transportation, agribusiness, clean tech, tourism, and retirement service. This is the only office that markets Swanee County. A portion of the economic development is funded by the county budget and other by grants. Both of these help our county. And a little bit about the people that are in that office. I reached out to Carissa, and she replied very quickly to me, here, here's some little thought things that you might wanna talk about. And then Mr. Norris sent me a little tidbit today about, without the support of the commissioners and the people, business development can't do anything. They really need all of us to be involved. Carissa is vice chair of the Regional Tourism Group, Visit North Florida. Mr. Norris is the chairman of Regional Economic Group of North Florida, serves on Rural Florida Rural Economic Development Association, serves on the Safe Economic Development Board. What's that all do for Swanee County? That gets them in front of other people that can bring economic development to us, that can bring tourism to us. I'm just gonna tell you, in my opinion, they do an awesome job. They really, I see Mr. Norris so many times when one of the delegation comes from the state, he's the first one there in front of them. And I think, I've heard you guys say it before, more people call Jimmy Norris than they call you guys. And the key to that is, we get in front of the state people, and we get grants that other people don't get. We get money that doesn't cost us a dime. And that's really all I have. I just wanna bring something positive every month to this meeting. I think we should be proud of what our Business Development Group does, and for two people, they do an awesome job. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hanica.
Those are the only forms I have, but is anybody else from the public wishing to speak Man, I was beginning to think you were sick or something.
After I get done, you might still have that. 14581 106th path, live oak. Got a whole list of flattery here that I could reach off, but I ain't got the three minutes. And actually, yes, forgot to start the clock, but since I got cut off last time, since we had something that was held out for discussion off the consent agenda, I need to readdress that. You pulled Agenda Item 11 for discussion?
No.
Yes, sir, it's in the minutes.
Go ahead, I won't interrupt you.
Well, it's in the minutes.
Go ahead.
Now you interrupted, you can't hold me to three minutes. But, but according to Robert's rules, which we don't go here unless it's chosen to at the time.
He can still hold you to three minutes, he has a phone, he just doesn't have the timer.
I couldn't hear you, but I know it's about the three minutes. Whatever, whatever.
Yeah, I run on stopwatch, but-
Yeah, all right. Well, but if I, if I, if I read a bunch of flattery, I could go over-
Let's talk to three minutes right now, how about that? We'll start over.
I could go over as long as I want, as long as I pray to y'all. That goes back to one time I was up here, and I said, I quoted some real wise person and said that, that the problem with most of us, and I didn't exclude me in that, I'll include me now, that would rather be ruined with flattery than, than saved by constructive criticism. I still believe that, and I'm still concerned about that. But anyway, so I could get this out on the new agenda. But that, item 11 last time, of course, the new chief didn't include the, the bids, and they're still not available to the public, and I don't know that we made the right choice, that's gonna be voted on tonight. There's no proof to me, when I went over, and actually I was in that meeting where they were grading those different companies, you know, I assume that they were done reasonably. The only problem was that there was great differences in the grading, I saw from 50 to 200, and so I don't know, and I didn't have the criteria. But anyway, I just, I hate being blocked, I hate to see any public citizen blocked when an item's pulled for discussion. That's actually, I discussed some of my concerns with other elected officials in the state, and they, they actually had a discussion about the possibility of doing lawsuits. I don't wanna see it get there, you know? But I will, I, well, y'all haven't figured out yet, I'm gonna continue trying to do what I believe is necessary to do from my position as a taxpayer and a concerned citizen. Not in that group, I'm not in that group, I can't associate with that group. But so, making a statement that y'all born here, good old boys, and ain't could do nothing to, to not do the best for this county, I've told y'all lists and lists of things that I disagreed with, and I, and I was told last time that I'm the only one that ever comes and does this. I may be one of the few that come here and does what I do, but I'm not the only one to get, that's, that I'm speaking for. I get, I get a lot of contacts that I don't go out and search. People listen to these videos, and they call me, they meet me in public, and, and they, they give me information, there's some big things that I wasn't aware of. I learned last week, and I won't bring it out here, and I hope it is dealt with, I mean, really big, big things. And so, when it is, I'll point out in the future that that was it. So, but there's things that's being done, like, I don't wanna miss this, the tire recycling, this is just an example, it ain't a lot of money. It appears that it, it's gonna cost us, we're gonna pay about $80,000 profit a year for that 590 tons of tires, all right? When I read the contract, our guys have to load those tires, all right? The contractors that we're gonna pay to haul those things and dispose of them, we're gonna give them about an $80,000 profit a year. The way I had it figured out, you know, they're charging us $220 a ton, it only costs, if you get them to the site, it only costs $85 a ton. I'm, I mean, we got a lot of land that we could store them tires, I don't know how long we should or what, but at $80,000 per year, if we stored them for four or five years, and we got them over there with our equipment, with our labor, I mean, there's that much money there. The, the, so, if y'all been paying to the national and state news, all this grant money and stuff, it's going away, folks, all right? There's a new regime coming in, they're gonna quit printing as much money, a lot of these grants aren't gonna be available, all right? So, so our less than $100 million a year revenue, what, $98 million? We're gonna have to live on that, all right? So all these exorbitant expenses that we're doing, you know, things I've pointed out, the $4 million we just paid profit for 10 years for that piece of land out there, that we may wind up holding, I know we had verbal discussion with the state that they're gonna, it's gonna be a state to pay for, but guess right, right now, the taxpayers are carrying that. And y'all don't wanna acknowledge it, but the average taxpayer in this county earns about $30,000 a year. They don't make six figures, and, and that $5 million's come out of them people's pockets, all right? And when all these state and federal grants dry up, which they're coming, it's coming, and I ain't no doomsayer, just read the news, it's happening right now. We could get stuck, I know that lumber mill out there, it took us however many years to pay that $5 million that can't, y'all, I don't think either one of y'all was on it, maybe one was. Nope, okay, good. None of y'all was on that, but we still had to pay that loss, all right? I hope this ain't gonna be a similar loss, you know? I know y'all got great plans for this, and, and I'm sure this guy'd love to have something to say. Anyway, the tire thing, I think, again, it's petty, it's 1% of what our budget is, you know? Or, I didn't do math, maybe less than 1. But, but if we built it up, I mean, $80,000 in five years, that's $400,000, that's a heck of a little chunk. You could, you know, I mean, I give you a concept, drop the millage or the tax rate for the people that's paying y'all salaries and everybody's salaries in the county, you know? Work on doing that. Show, show, absolutely. I'd, I'd love to come up here and give y'all nothing but praise, all right? And at one time, that's all I did, all right? If y'all recall, I don't know if y'all can think back that far, it ain't been that long ago. But I don't enjoy coming and doing this, but man, y'all do well, y'all could do better, and I'll keep, until, until I'm satisfied, I'll keep coming and pointing out things that I'm not satisfied with. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Anybody else from the public wishing to speak? Mr. Hancock's holding up a sign, he asked me to speak, say this here later. He just wanted me to announce that Chris Ann Hall is a constitutional attorney, I think everybody here's probably heard of her, a speaker and author. She is speaking Saturday, January 18th, at 2:00 p.m. at the Swanee County Coliseum. If you don't know where that's at, it's at 1302 11th Street, Live Oak, Florida. It's being hosted by the American Patriots and the Swanee County Republican Party. It is free, correct, Mr. Hancock?
Hope we do.
Free.
Hopefully not.
So, Saturday, January 18th at 2:00, Swanee County Coliseum, Mrs. Chris Ann Hall will be speaking.
Pre-voilé.
Did it do good, Mr. Hancock? Okay. Man, it made somebody happy. Alright. Anybody else from the public wishing to speak?
I can show up.
Next item on the agenda is proclamations and presentations. We have a presentation by Mrs. Caitlin Barrington, the manager of external affairs from Swanee Valley Electric. You're gonna lower everybody's light bill and free internet, right?
That would be nice.
Welcome, Ms. Barrington.
Thank you, thank you guys for having me. I just wanna kinda give a little bit of a notification, really, just, it's kind of a cool time of year with the new year. I'm learning a lot about Swanee Valley, and I grew up in Mayo, so I understand the communities that we serve. And one of the really cool things that I learned was, and what I'm happy to give notification of on behalf of Swanee Valley, is that our property taxes are paid. And that's a little over a million dollars for Swanee County with Swanee Valley Electric. And I just wanted to give a couple bits of information on some of the advancements that we've made this year, one of which, which I don't think I've heard much about spoken publicly, but we did do quite a bit of meter advancements this year. So, of course, that adds to our TPP, but it also is gonna help identify outages quicker. The way it was explained to me, which I'm not an expert at it, but used to, we had to signal the meters to figure out if they were on or off. With this new technology, they will, they'll signal us. So, it's just a more advanced technology. As always, the internet, since 2022, we have added to our infrastructure and our assets with Rapid Fiber. By the end of this year, all Swanee Valley members should be able to have offered Rapid Fiber, so that's definitely moving and coming. And lastly, we just are always looking at working to improve our facilities and our operations. Hopefully, we do not experience a season like we did this year, but we're always working towards a better way and have some great things planned for 2025. So, I just wanted to kinda give notification of that.
We appreciate it. Any of you guys have any trivial questions for Ms. Barrington?
No, I'm not available for those, no, I'm just kidding.
I'm sorry, she's not taking any questions.
Always available for them, may not have the answers, but.
Well, y'all give her a call if you got any questions.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Barrington.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. We are going to vote on number 11 independently, we have a commissioner need to abstain, so to keep it clear for the clerk's purposes, we're gonna vote on items 3 through 10 and 12 through 17, excluding number 11. Any questions, comments, concerns, or do I have a motion to approve those items?
So moved.
Have a motion by Commissioner Perkins.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries 5 to 0. On item number 11, I believe Commissioner Mobley, you need to.
Yeah, for transparency reasons, I need, I got a business dealings with one of the partners, so I need to abstain from the vote on item 11.
Right, understand. So, Commissioner Mobley's gonna abstain from this one, so on item 11, any questions, comments, concerns, or do I have a motion to approve?
Same move.
Have a motion by Commissioner White.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor? Aye. Aye. Motion carries 4 to 0 with Commissioner Mobley abstaining. Next item on the agenda, constitutional officers, any constitutional officers? Sheriff, you're all dressed up, you don't wanna speak? You got sworn in today, congratulations. Oh, did she? She swears me in every day.
It ain't working.
Actually, she had just got sworn in today.
She did.
About five hours early, and she swore everybody in and all, but I do wanna thank y'all for last year and hopefully have a good 2025 and so forth. Be well. Go forward with and so forth and everything. Here again, which I gave a little speech here after they formed in and just let everybody know. I appreciate, you know, everybody having the confidence in voting you back in as your sheriff and all, and I promise that I'll, we'll do a good job for you for the next four years, and hopefully everything will go like we supposed to.
We appreciate you, I didn't mean to call you out, but I saw you sitting there all dressed up, so I figured.
Yes, sir. My uncle show off, right?
Yeah, that's right. Thank you. Thank you. Any other constitutional officers present wishing to speak? Alright, seen none, we'll move along to staff items. Any staff present wishing to speak, Mr. Fury?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Board, just hadn't been up in a while, so was gonna kinda give you a quick update on a few things we got going on. We just started soccer, so I think Commissioner Land, are you coaching a team out there, is that right?
I am coaching. Maybe I'll do well at that.
Maybe your wife will give you some pointers. 485 kids though out there, that's a lot of young men playing soccer. Four baseball fields out there, so 34 teams, over 200 games, 136 girls, 350 boys, it's coed age 5 through 13, so that's a lot of kids. Couple just announcements, Charles Springs, the boat ramp at Charles and the boat ramp at Downing Park are gonna be closed down temporarily for a couple weeks. Downing Park had some damage from the equipment getting off the river, getting trees off of the banks and that sort of thing. Thinking excavator came up, walked up and squashed a lot of that concrete and cracked it up. Gaming Fish, actually, FWC is, it's one of their boat ramps, so they're gonna pay for that and fix it. There, some of their equipment's down, so it's gonna, it's gonna take an extra week. But anyway, that's down. And then Charles Springs, we're getting ready to start that grant project out there for the floating dock out on the river and then repair to the boat ramp itself there. So, spring will be open, but the boat ramp side will be closed, and we'll get that open as quick as we can. Let's see, the Greenway, we've completed the Greenway and the bridge down in Branford along 27 there, so that's open and been a great success. We'll probably try to reschedule another ribbon cutting outside of hurricane season, we had two canceled, so maybe we'll try for this spring and get you guys in Columbia County down there and take a picture, and we're proud of that. DOT's proud of that project, they've been showing that off, so we wanna, we wanna recognize them for that. Couple other projects, talk about Swanee Valley, they're a great partner with us, the county and Parks and Rec too. They recently gave $10,000 to the Parks and Rec for some renovations in the Coliseum. They do their annual meeting in there, and so they wanna help with some sound system and that sort of thing. So, appreciate Swanee Valley Electric as a partner. We also finished X2. If you haven't been in there, I know you'll be in there tomorrow for our meeting, but completely renovated Exhibition 2 there from the last time you were in there for a commission meeting. New flooring, new wall, drywall instead of paneling, new drop ceiling. Working on some other IT and audiovisual stuff in there possibly, but it looks really good. So, if you get a chance and you're by there, you can stop in, otherwise, I'm sure we'll have a meeting or some occasion over there in the future. But it looks really good, our guys did a really good job with that. Couple projects, the tree thinning out at Project Summit, so we can get some of those damaged trees and get those out before any beetles or disease gets in those. That'll drop, I think, tomorrow, Holland said, and so we'll be looking to get some bids coming in on those 65 acres of pines. The master planning for the Project Summit, RFQs, I think they're due this Friday, and so we'll see how many firms we get to submit for that. Start looking at the design of that property, that facility. Something else to keep in mind, the livestock building, we're getting close to having our final plans for that and go out to bid and get our bid docs together for the livestock through the FDAX grant at the Coliseum. If you've been by there, all the old buildings are gone, it looks real good. It's gonna have nice wide open space for the fair this year, but we need a new facility over there. I know the cattlemen have a show coming up here, and talking to them and 4H and some of the folks around here, they, we feel like they can fill that up every, maybe not every weekend, but a couple times a month throughout the year with ag events and steer shows and hog shows and all this kind of thing. So, excited for that building, we're gonna have to phase it, some of our funding was cut last year. I know we got a big, you know, we got different asks this year for appropriations, but through that FDAX grant request, we have a million dollar request in this year. We need to, we need to work hard to try to get that through the session, you know, at the end of the budget year this year. So, with the senator and the representative, we need to, we need to focus on trying to keep that in there, if it ranks high enough. I mean, it's a competitive, competitive grant, so that'll help us finish that out and then close that building, heat and cool it, and have a nice indoor facility on the show side of that. So, keep that in mind as we go through. I think that's pretty much it, I'll just drop a quick, we had a meeting today with water management about the springs. I think I mentioned in the past, they're, they're looking to get out of the recreation side of their properties and do more of the conservation and management and trails and that sort of thing. So, they approached us about, you know, conveying ownership to the county for Telford Springs. They also wanna include Swanee Springs and Falmouth Springs as well. So, we've been talking about that internally with staff and what that looks like and what that might cost. Met with them again today, because they're anxious to move forward on that. So, we, you know, they're willing to do a short-term lease before they would convey that, and I don't know all the legal jargon, and there was no lawyers in the room today, but I'm sure you guys can.
As I'm finding out.
Always the last to know, right?
On purpose.
It's your job to make the mess, it's his to clean it up, right?
We'll get you there at the right time. But they're willing to potentially give some funding upfront to help us transition to that full-time, you know, ownership and maintaining that, and basically, you know, what we know is, they've heard good things about how our springs are looking and how our parks in general, specifically Little River and Royal. And I don't know that we would charge at any of these springs, but just the effort and the standard of care that we give to those springs, they wanna see us, you know, do the same with these and open those to the public and take great care of them, so.
Well, not to interrupt you, but before we get too far on that, is there, is there a way, I know you said they were willing to, but, you know, I think those would be great assets to the county. My only concern would be that we find out after we accept ownership that it's an exorbitant amount of money to maintain those with, like you said, probably not charged, because those aren't premier swimming, Swanee Springs maybe, but the rest of them aren't maybe premier swimming destinations where some of the other ones are, just because of their size. So, is there a way to do like, like you said, maybe a six-month summertime lease to see what that, and for you guys, Parks and Rec, to track, try to track hours, try to track maintenance or whatnot, to see what that costs us like for us to maintain?
Yeah, I don't know if it would be something as formal as a lease or not, but we talked about that today, that this summer, we need to put our eyes on it regularly, just to see what the traffic looks like and see what the maintenance of it looks like, so that we do know what we're getting into, for sure.
Commissioner Hale?
To add to that, and I'm glad you said what you said, because I was thinking along the same terms. You said some money upfront to kickstart it, but I was kinda thinking more continuous. I mean, it's not the full amount, it would cost them to do that, but I mean, maybe something every year, you know, to go towards that, not just a one-time bill.
Lawyers are good at drawing up contracts and putting those kind of things in them, so. Yeah, I think we try to do as much as we can in reasonable effort.
I'd love to see something more on a routine basis than just upfront.
Well, I mean, we just, as a board, or as anybody, as a business owner, you have to be cautious taking on assets that you may not have the money to maintain.
Yeah, no doubt.
So, you know, yeah, I think they would be great assets, I think they would be beneficial for the county to own them, but we just need to be cautious on what that costs us like to maintain that, because they're not revenue generators.
Sorry, they're, you know, all of those are hundreds of acres of tracks, like Falmouth might be a couple hundred acre. We're only talking about a footprint of the actual spring, so maybe five acres. And, you know, the same at Telford and Royal, it's not gonna be the whole property, so. And there was a lot of damage at Falmouth, and they've got a FEMA project on that, so they, they're planning on making some improvements, go ahead and foot in that bill in anticipation of getting reimbursed by FEMA later on. There's some conceptual design for Telford that we would, we would ask them probably to do upfront as well before we take it over with some parking improvements. But they cleared some damaged trees and stuff out there after the hurricane, and if you haven't been to Telford, it looks really good out there, it's amazing how much it opened it up, you can get to the river, you can see a view. It's gonna probably encourage quite a bit of traffic, so we just need to keep those kind of things in mind, what we're getting into, for sure. I'll keep you posted, bring it back to you. Eventually, I think they'll send a representative to the board to probably make a request. We'll have to go to their, you know, to their board, it won't be a hard vote on their end, I'm sure, but we'll have to approach them, you know, after we get there.
Well, I mean, they're not in the business of maintaining springs. I mean, I think all the counties, pretty much, most of the counties went to the ownership of the springs and doing the maintenance and created parks and maintaining them, and that's just not the business out there.
She mentioned that today too, that we're not the only county, like, they're going to Lafayette County and Madison County as well to do the same type of thing, so. Just kinda keep you in the loop there. We did, I'll just mention, we had the ability to do some geo-fencing, and I don't know how all this works, this AI and computer programs, but we did a geo-fence around some of those springs, and so like, last year, or it's actually the year before last, because last year we were closed down pretty good for the flooding and the hurricanes, but we average about 80,000 people a year at like Little River and Royal, and they're averaging about 50,000 at Swanee Springs, and maybe seven or, seven at like Telford, 10 at Charles, and I think it was like six or seven at Falmouth as well. So, you're absolutely right, Swanee Springs is the one with the traffic. Of course, that's from the graffiti bridge all the way down to the spring, there's quite a bit of property and trails to walk there. We get a lot from the music park that come down there, so.
Well, it's not just expensive for Parks and Rec, I mean, the sheriff's office will have increased, you know, liability or exposure there too, so I mean, it's not.
Funding source.
Yeah. I mean, we just need to be mindful of sheriff's office and Parks and Rec.
Yeah, that's a good point. That's all I have, unless you have any questions for me?
Any commissioners have any questions for Mr. Fury?
No, but I'll say this, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman, while he's here. I just wanna say thank you to him publicly. I don't even remember where we were at, but I'd made a comment to him about something I wanted him to check on and look at, that I wanted to see what the possibility of us doing something with some property on the river that we own. And I'd forgot about it, to be honest with you. And out of the blue, he calls me the other day, and he's at the property, he's looking at it, he's got folks here with him. So, I just appreciate you following through and doing your job.
Just clarify, that's not your property, that's the county property.
It was county. Yeah, 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 no, not my property. No, that is the county property, isn't it? Yeah, I thought it did, yeah.
You said property we owns, I was like.
Yeah, we, the county, the people own, yeah. It's just a little, we can talk more about it as you get more information, but he's doing good with all that stuff. I just appreciate him doing it, I really do.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir, Commissioner Perkins.
Mr. Fury, so how things looking for Doug and Senator in all of Hill Park?
I knew you was gonna ask me that.
I know you had to answer for me.
I think tonight, we had the agreement.
Yeah, we just. I know we got, we got the funds in there, I mean, I know, I see the funds, now we have funds to afford this too now, so I wonder where we at?
The next step will be to get with an architect and get some plans and start moving, we're ready to go.
Okay, I'll hold you to it.
Yes, sir, please do. John Hill Park, we haven't got anything on that yet, so that'll be the next, I assume. Branford and John Hill Park, they'll be forthcoming here soon.
Thank you, Shannon.
We're ready to jump in on Doug's.
Don't have those yet.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Fury.
Thank you.
Any other staff members present wishing to speak? Ms. Freeman.
Wow.
First second time to the podium.
Hello.
Welcome, ma'am.
Well, Mr. Scott asked me to come and talk to you guys and give you an update as to where we're at with procurement. And I know the last time I came, Shannon and I spoke to you guys about some programs we were looking at and, you know, the excitement that we're really wanting something like this. So, just giving y'all an update, past several months, I've been doing lots of research on different programs that will assist Shannon and myself with procurement and contract management, and we have some good news. We are moving forward with Bonfire powered by UNA Solutions. UNA Solutions is the parent company of DemandStar. So, working with Bonfire will allow us to continue posting on DemandStar without any kind of interruption with that for our vendors. Bonfire will help us automate our current manual process. It will help to expedite solicitation creation, working with us to set up templates for our standard solicitations, so that's gonna help expedite from that point of view. It will help us with collaborations with engineering firms. And if there's any kind of solicitations we haven't done before, there's all kinds of different avenues to look at through Bonfire's different resources they have with all other different municipalities and city local governments across the United States. Speaking from a vendor's perspective, they have live chat features. If there's any kind of questions or concerns about creating an account or doing any kind of e-procurement or downloading documents, if there's any issues, that's something that's completely free to vendors. The only, I did look into this a lot, just to make sure I was completely correct. The only time there is any kind of payment that a vendor has to do is if the vendor is actually signing up for a premium subscription with Bonfire for Bonfire to look for solicitations for them. So, that's not any kind of fee to subscribe to us specifically on Bonfire or other government offices. The platform will allow us to move in a direction of e-procurement, not completely, of course. We'll still, for our local vendors, I know that decide to stay paper-based, they'll still. be able to submit in paper form, but anybody that's looking to go paperless, that's a great option that we'll be looking into. And then the last thing that will be really great for us is the contract management aspect of it. Following awards, we have some, you know, missteps with getting an award done and getting into contract and starting the ball rolling on all of that, and this will be able to help us keep track of that a little bit more. Once the solicitation process has concluded and, of course, we award, that's all tracked from the beginning of the, beginning of solicitation all the way through the very end of the contract, where construction is completed, everything's done, that's, that's something that's going to be able to be tracked through the Bonfire program. Do you have any questions for me about it?
Yeah, I do. So on the Bonfire, once the vendor registers as a vendor on Bonfire, and let's just say they select Swanee County as a county of interest that they do business in, whatever, whether it's construction or selling equipment, whatever it is, and the county goes on and posts a bid solicitation.
They get emails.
They will get a notification now from Bonfire saying, hey, Swanee County just put out a bid for equipment, whatever.
Yep.
I may be a contractor and say, I'm not interested, but if I'm an equipment seller, I'll say, thanks for the notification, and see if I want to bid on that or not, see if I sell that, right?
Yeah.
So now it will be more vendor-friendly as far as the vendors will not have to go on and search DemandStar to see if we have posted anything.
Correct.
Or read the paper. All they need to do is get on Bonfire, create an account, select Swanee County as one of their areas or whatever.
Yep.
They'll get a notification anytime Swanee County.
Yep.
I think that'll be magnificent. I think it'll create competition. I think it'll help, hopefully help the local guys not miss or overlook any solicitations from the county.
Yeah, and, and statutorily, we still have to publish in newspapers and stuff, but, you know, this is another great avenue.
I mean, I think our board and boards before us have heard from other vendors, I didn't even know y'all, it's posted, I didn't read the newspaper, I didn't see it, I'm not on DemandStar.
Yep.
So I think, I think as staff and as whatever, and anybody watching YouTube or sitting here tonight, if you're a vendor of any kind that does business with the county currently or want to, be looking for that Bonfire, figure out how to register, become a vendor there so you get the stuff.
Yeah, and I'm, I'm sure we'll do some type of public notice whenever it's live and ready to go, for vendors to start signing up. Probably I'll have to come back and talk to you guys again and say it's live and we're ready to go.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
And do you know, is that something yearly they have to go in and set up their account?
No.
Or is it, once it's there, it stays there?
It's, yeah, as long as we're using them, at that point, it stays there.
Okay, okay. So they'll just continually see that each time we put something up there?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman.
Simplifies a lot of things.
Commissioner Perkins.
Is it, is there a cost for registering? It seems, it seems like it's pretty user-friendly, but is it, is it a cost to register on it?
For us or for the vendor?
For vendor.
No, sir. There is no cost to the vendor.
Unless they do the premium.
Unless they decide to make Bonfire work for them, but.
Right.
Anybody, any other commissioner, question for Ms. Freeman?
Good talk.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman.
I'm very excited about it.
Thank you, Ms. Freeman.
Thank you.
Any other staff members present wishing to speak? Seeing none, we'll move along. Commissioner items, any commissioners have any business to bring forward to the board? Seeing none, we'll move along. County attorney, county attorney have any business?
Briefly, Mr. Chairman. So on the agenda for the next meeting, right now we're on schedule for an agreement between the county and Sincere Care Foundation LLC. That's the agreement, y'all may recall last year when Ms. Harris came by, and that's the women's health, so it's the women's health clinic that they want to put over on the soccer fields. So I just wanted to bring to y'all's attention that we're getting into the finalized form of the agreement, and I wanted to kind of walk you guys through that structure, so that way if y'all had any reservations, I would know now, rather than if Ms. Harris comes next meeting, trying to drill through those issues then. So essentially, the way, the skeleton of the agreement is consistent with what you guys said last time we spoke, to the seven acres that are dry, that are already mowed and cleared over where the soccer fields are, we would convey title to the foundation. They would, we would, they would take out a note and mortgage in the amount of $500,000 for the, for consideration for the value of that real property. I've checked that number against Ricky, that's in line with realistic values of that land at this moment. And so we're treating it, to a certain extent, I use the skeleton of an economic development agreement, even though this is not an economic development agreement in that it's not projected to create jobs, but create a service for the community that would be available. But we needed objective benchmarks for them to meet in order to ultimately forgive the loan to enable this resource to be there for the community. So what we had talked about, and what's currently in the draft of the agreement, would be that within 36 months of acceptance of the real property, they have to be fully built, so completely vertical, everything's done, they're permitted, they're up and they're operational. And then thereafter, they have five years to be in continuous operation. After three years of being in continuous operation, meaning, and it's all defined in the agreement, maintaining all their licenses, seeing patients, the whole nine, we'll forgive half the loan, and at the end of that five years, if they continue to maintain being in continuous operation and providing those services to the community, we would forgive the rest of the loan. And to be clear, what that means is in the event that they don't meet any of those objective benchmarks, it would be subject to recapture by the county. We would go in, we would get the property back, even if they had put a substantial amount of money into the property and improving it and putting a building or something on there, we would get that building when we clawed back the property. So that's kind of the out, the basic skeleton of the outline of the agreement. There's a lot more terms to it, but I just wanted to float that by you guys, make sure you guys are comfortable with that skeleton before we bring it up formally next meeting.
I got, I'll, I'll go. Go ahead, Commissioner.
So this had already been going to, to the foundation and to Ms. Harris, and they already agreed to?
Right. They've already said they're okay with this structure, but since we're not at the, Mr. Perkins was there when we were kind of going through, sitting there with me, going through the back and forth, trying to figure out how best to make this work. So yes, they've agreed on their end of it, but I just am trying to spare if there's a major objection on the commission to the structure, there being a spectacle next week, next time when, if there needs to be some major changes made.
That's what we're saying.
Yeah, but yes, they fundamentally, they're on board with this structure.
I'll, for the, for those that may not know what Sincere is, Sincere would be, is a, is a women's health facility, childbirth, Mr. Perkins, you're more familiar, childbirth, all types of health.
It's specifically designed to deal with lower-income women's health needs. It's going to be, the goal, if everything goes according to plan, according to Ms. Harris, would be to be targeted at lower and low-income women, to provide them with substantial healthcare services that they would otherwise have to travel a significant amount of distance in order to receive. To be clear, there will be no abortion services of any, any kind whatsoever provided.
I'm glad you said that.
Yeah. But essentially, it's to provide a low-income access for comprehensive women's health, women's healthcare here in the Live Oak area in Swanee County.
They're very much pro-life, I've heard, and they are also seeking federal assistance on that lower income, so it would be to, you know, anyway, that's who they are. My concern would be, I don't know the financial capabilities of that organization or that finance foundation, my concern would be is that the property being taxpayers' property, Swanee County specifically, and the $500,000 mark you gave, as far as construction, permitting infrastructure, I don't know where those resources are going to come from, but my concern would be that, hey, I really would not want to see Swanee County subordinate our mortgage, because you said, particularly, I don't want to subordinate and us become a second or a third mortgage to some other private lender or a government, some other government entity.
Big and bold in the agreement, Mr. Chairman, is this is, there, that there shall be no priority, priority liens above this. This is a complete lien on the property. They cannot use it for any other purpose. It's also completely non-assignable.
Yeah, I would be good with that. I just wouldn't want the county to fall into a second or third mortgage position, whereas we got to take the top guy out to get it back, or the first mortgage holder. We don't want to get in that position, so if you have some language in there to prohibit that.
That's already there, and then one other thing to deal with, and I'm not trying to sound, I'm the lawyer, so I can be a jerk. If for some reason, for example, you said you weren't sure about their funding and they could do a bunch of stuff, not being mean about it, but if that's correct and they get, let's say, the building up, but they fall flat on funding for continuous operations, not to be too, put too fine a point on it, that'll be a them problem, not an us problem, because the clawback on, the clawback rights in here are very concrete.
Okay, I mean, I, I want to see them succeed.
No, 100%.
It would be great. I want to see them get there. I hope that they do, but we also have to look, we're towards the taxpayers' assets, taxpayers' money, that's a taxpayer asset, I want to make sure that we protect that outside the fence we're on, albeit, they will be great for the community, and I hope that they, that they make it.
100%.
In the event that they don't, we have to protect Swanee County's assets. So if you have that in there, then I think.
No, yeah, but no, I saw where you were going, and we've, that's already been addressed in the text of the agreement.
Any other commissioners have any concern?
No concern, just a question. I understand we, the seven acres is dry.
Correct.
Do they need the entire seven acres? Could they use five? Could we keep two back?
Well, hold on.
Is five?
I'm looking.
I understand that's what's dry up there, but.
I think she asked for that, that seven acres, that was buildable, and the rest of it, not, want to retain that for that drainage and so forth.
And just as a matter of complication, at our request, if, remember, when they started, first started talking to us, they were going to get that whole piece, right? And then when I talked to the board back in November, whenever it was, the board correctly brought up, was like, well, wait a minute, that's a swamp on the back half, and we need that for water drainage. So I communicated with Ms. Harris and their attorney and said, you know, if we're, if we're going to put you anywhere, it's going to be where you're high and dry, we need to retain the rest of that for water management purposes. And quite frankly, we're looking at diverting even more water over there from across the street. So that was communicated to them, and I represented to them where it's high and dry now, where it's taken, where it's, where the land is, and it's being, it's been cleared, if you're going to need to go get a survey of that, and that's what we'd be willing to convey to you, but we need to keep the swamp for ourselves. So that was the reason for the seven acres, because that, it was based upon my representation to them, based upon our discussion. I can go back and ask them if they'll take less, but then we got to figure out where to draw those lines for taking less.
I mean, that's up to the board, I just wanted to mention it.
Well, I think what she's doing, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
That she's asking for the land, for more because of the fact that they're also going to have that facility there for the women's health, and also that there's plans for it to put in outbuildings in the back for those women that come there that haven't traveled so far that they'll be able to have a place to go in and have their rest until they reach that 10 centimeters to have the baby, so that way they'll be back there, that'd be a creative environment for them to have a comfortable area. So there'll be some cottages put back there, that's what she, that's why she's wanting all the property, she can get to put cottages.
Like pre-labor and post-labor.
Yeah, yeah, so that's why they need, yeah, so this is, you know, on that two acres or whatever, so.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm good with that. She's got a need for it, I just didn't know if she had a need for the whole seven acres. I haven't seen that, the drawout of the facility, so.
You asked the question I wanted, so.
Any other questions for Mr. Morrison? Mr. Morrison, you have anything else?
No, sir. Like I said, I just, she was going to be here at the next meeting to talk to the county about all the advantages to it, and I was just trying to avoid a spectacle if there was going to be issues on the substance of the agreement, so that you can look at that for the agenda for the next meeting.
Fair enough. Next item on the agenda is consulting items, are any consultants, county consultants present wishing to speak? I see some present, they're not talking, apparently. All right. Next item on the agenda is general business, number 18. Discuss with possible board action, final plat approval of Kellywood subdivision. Mr. Ron Meeks.
Mr. Chairman, board members, we have a plat that's been submitted, it's a minor subdivision, so the action of the board is that you give preliminary and final plat approval in one action. Logan has the mylar copies that the board does choose to approve the subdivision with the chairman's signature. You do have it tonight. Kellywood subdivision is an 11.11 acre parcel of property, so it only contains two lots, 5.01 acres in size. Each lot would be, property is located off of 185th Road, located in section 28, Township One South, Range 12 East. Land Development Regulations requires subdivision lots of less than 20 acres in size to have direct access to a paved road. 185th Road is a paved road, so it meets those requirements. And you have a copy of the title, opinion and application for the property as part of your agenda packet, so we can use the motion of the board in approval.
Meets all your LDR specs, Mr. Meeks?
Yes, sir.
Any questions, the board members, on Mr. Meeks? Seeing, hearing none, do I have a motion to approve?
Seven moves.
Have a motion by Commissioner White to approve?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Next item is 19, any additional agenda items, Mr. Scott?
Yes, sir.
No other additional agenda items. Item 20, administrators' comments and information. Mr. Scott?
Just want to make a couple comments, keep it brief. This is for Mr. Hancock. You see, you get a new parks director and you get that expedition done pretty quick, so good move there for a commission making that decision to hire that gentleman. We are working, especially in the next month or so, to look at timelines for all of our projects. We're excited about the new procurement process. Been looking for that golden goose for a while to see how we can streamline our processes. The cool thing about, that I see is the local vendors have better access to knowing what's going on, they can get engaged, and then expediting the process. The process gets bogged down so often in government, and we think this will really streamline the process, and excited about that. So that's, appreciate Holland's efforts on that. You know, Shannon was involved also, but that's kind of Holland's baby, and she's, if you can tell, she's a little bit excited, which is good. Debris is still out there, they're still working on it. You know, the holiday is over, they're back working again. I wish I saw more trucks on the hill than there is, but it's going to be, it looks to me to be a slow process, but they're still getting it. So I've not got any reports lately on where they are with clearing roads. I get a report periodically through emergency management from DOT. They have made the first pass, they should be working on the last pass now, so hopefully they'll get that as quick as we can. Had a request today, city manager, Mr. Sessions, came by the office and just posed the question, how are we with the building department? He is going to lose his building official and ask about partnering. I think we got a little bit of ways to talk through that process a little bit. City is willing to contribute, you know, decent amount of money to make that work for the citizens, be one-stop shopping, but if we go forward, we need to have a long-term agreement, not get geared up and then it, then it change. So I'm not ready to make a recommendation on that, but just hearing your feedback you've got, so we can work out kinks before we get really started, but, in that conversation. But again, their, their building official is planning on leaving, he'll be around for a while. Like always, we share with other officials around us to help each other out. We'll help them out as we go, but we need a longer-term fix if they're not going to rehire a position, so. But, you know, Larry and I need to spend some time together, talk more. He came in as I was running out the door to get to a utility meeting this morning, but just want to see any, any heartburn or positive thoughts that the commission has before we[1768.41] or positive thoughts that the commission has before we move forward with more conversation.
Mr. Scott, when is their building official leaving?
He will stick around for a while through the transition. We didn't get into specifics on timelines. But my general thought is, talk to staff, and we've got a part-time guy, Mr. Albin, that's works for us now. If we were able to get him on full-time, that would take the load. I just want to make sure we're in a position so if we get hit by more storms in the future, we're not playing catch-up for months and months and months. We cannot put ourselves in that position again. We gotta make sure we're ready to go, in spite of what we do for, for the municipality. We do that for the city now, the building inspections now for Branford. So it'd be similar, but we just need to have a good plan.
Any commissioners, got any comments or questions for Mr. Scott in that regard?
I don't have a problem. If he wants to have more discussions with Mr. Sessions and come back to us, I'm good with that.
If anything comes to your mind later, please share, so we can make sure we address it upfront.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Scott?
Nothing. We're good. Thank you.
All right, guys. Last item on the agenda is board members. Closing comments. I started down here last time.
I think, I think it was down there.
I tried a foot flop. Well, Commissioner.
I did want to simple pick on Mr. Bowe. Mr. Bowe, you catch me leaning in each time I speak tonight, making sure I'm in the mic. Gives me a hard time about that. But nothing more to say to others, and thank you to everyone being here this evening. Hope everybody had a great Christmas and a new year. And again, I can't thank our staff enough and the board here. Mr. Hannika was talking about some of the things that our tourism and Economic Development Office does, but I can tell you, we go to these meetings as a group, and we fight for Swanee County as a group. So I just appreciate everybody. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner White.
Just glad to see everybody here taking part in your local government. It's good to see you. Hope everybody had a great Christmas and a good new year. And that's all I got.
Should be kind of short tonight.
Yep.
Commissioner Perkins?
I'm just echoing the same as the other two commissioners, Commissioner White and Commissioner Hale. Just grateful for making it over to 2025, and thankful for all you all that have been there supporting us and, and helping us out to make Swanee County a better county. And we thank for Ms. Robertson being in the back from, councilwoman from the city. Right, we always have Stacy with us from Branford, but thank you for Councilwoman Robertson being in. And thank you for all you all. And Mr. Lockley, well, thank you all the organization that has supported us with our Christmas thing for, made it a great Christmas. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Perkins, Commissioner Mobley. I echo everyone else. Just thank, thank you to staff and everybody for coming. Bundle up tonight, it's gonna be cold. Get that water dripping.
No, he don't.
I gotta do that when I get home.
Buster Piper, I beat her. Just call me. Call me daytime and we'll, night time.
County attorney, can you calm him down?
Hey, we get our temperature.
It's my friend out, it's my friend out here, so. Yeah.
No, same for me. Just hope everyone had a Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Glad we had a big turnout tonight. It's always good to see local citizens getting involved in local government. So the more the merrier. We're never perfect. We don't claim to know everything. So to see a room full, offering good advice, bad advice, criticism, we accept it all.
Yeah.
But anyway, that's all I got, too. Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. Anything else? All that, after.
Mr. Chairman, you got this north back, you're like, you're sitting pretty stiff back. Maybe he's still alive.
I motion to adjourn. First meeting in five years, Morris sat and came up, so the north ain't come to the podium. So just leave him alone. He's being a good boy back there.
He had a good day.
He had a good New Year's resolution. He's not gonna, he's only gonna speak every other meeting.
Okay.
So this is his first one. I expect a full entourage of information on the next one.
Oh, next meeting, okay.
Yeah, probably a 30-minute.
Makeup, yeah.
Yeah. So all, all I need is a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
A motion by Commissioner Hale.
Thanks.
Second by, Perkins, he said Perkins. Second, second by Perkins, all in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Thank you.